City Council Meeting, if I can ask you to all please rise for the invocation. Tonight's invocation will be given by none other than Councilman Jimmy Conyers. And if I can ask you to remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
All right, y'all please bow your heads. Gracious Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this day, for our friends, our families, and the many blessings you've given us. We ask that you grant us wisdom and guide us as we make decisions to the benefit of our city. And we especially ask for our safety and protection during this challenging time. And I ask that you bring us together as a community and help us continue to get through this. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Conyers. Appreciate that. All right. First item on tonight's agenda will be to approve the minutes of the regular City Council Meeting, the work session, and the agenda meeting held on July 26th. Do we have any changes to those minutes? Additions, deletions?
Make a motion we approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes that submitted. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Mayor Sullivan, your report, please.
Thank you. I'm actually going to go to the podium. Tonight, we have a young lady with us that I wanted to present a certificate of achievement to. Most of you probably know Stacy Forbisch. Are you seen online? Stacy is in charge of the Eastern Shore Twirlers. She has, they're performing baton twirlers that are usually in our Christmas parade. There are a lot of different community events. Stacy is right now battling against COVID at UAB and has been there for a while. But this was something that was very important to her. She contacted me early on and asked that I recognize Mallory and its renier. Correct. Good, I said it right. Mallory Renier. And this is for, Mallory, she wanted to recognize her for earning a position as a Baylor University Golden Girl. This is a highly coveted and extremely competitive position and is an outstanding accomplishment. She wanted to commend her dedication and hard work and deem it an honor and privilege to present you with this certificate of achievement. It said, "On behalf of the City of Fairhope, we are pleased to commend you in your fine efforts and extend this token of admiration with which you are regarded in our city. Best wishes in your future endeavors. You are sure to succeed." And this was so important to Stacy because she, you know, you see people at all the award ceremonies getting scholarships and different things, and there just wasn't anything there for Mallory to be recognized. And so it was really important that she received this recognition. So I'm happy to do that tonight. Thank you.
Congratulations.
And then I'm going to also call John Hammer up. He has some presentations to do as well. Thank you.
Good evening. Appreciate a few minutes of your time, but we'll make it quick. First, I'd like to introduce to you one of our newest officers, Brittany Jackson. Brittany, you don't have to come forward, just wave. Brittany comes to us from Gulfport, Mississippi. She has a ton of experience and a great skill set. She was on the SWAT team back home in Gulfport, so she knows how to take care of herself, and we're glad to have her. Secondly, I'd like to, Dustin, you are going to have to come up. I'd like to recognize Officer Holmes. He is our officer of the quarter. He has already received his certificate and his award, but we wanted to recognize Dustin tonight in front of y'all. One of the things that I like about, particularly like about a recognized Dustin with this award is that, not to diminish anything that anybody else has been recognized for, but, you know, sometimes you find yourself in the right place at the right time to do a heroic act or, you know, you stop the right car with a trunk full of drugs or something that really has set you apart. But what Dustin does is just show up every day and outwork most everybody else. What he does is, you know, your average police officer, Dustin has taken about twice as many reports as your average officer. And while doing that, he still manages to finish in the top three or top five in every statistic, arrests, traffic stops, and, I mean, just really, he's just one of these guys that shows up every day and works hard. And we don't get an opportunity to recognize people like that enough. So I'm particularly pleased that Dustin, and remember, he was chosen by his peers. It's one thing when you're recognized by your boss, but to me, it's a little bit sweeter when the people you work with recognize you for your hard work. And that's what we got tonight, Officer of the Quarter Dustin Holmes.
That it?
That's it.
All right. Next item is public participation for agenda items. If you would like to address the council on items one through 27, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You'll be given three minutes. And if you have something that is not on the agenda, I would ask you to wait until the conclusion of tonight's meeting for the second public participation opportunity.
My name is Stephanie Dernan. I live at 209 Hemlock Drive in Fairhope. I have come here to speak with you about agenda item number 26. I was surprised to see this item on the agenda, incentivizing the COVID vaccine for our employees. Honestly, I'm disappointed. During the last election cycle, I contacted most of you, and you assured me you were fiscally conservative. With this type of resolution, I call that commitment into question. Incentivizing a vaccination with our taxpayer funds is unconscionable, and it will cost a fortune. It doesn't matter that this money is coming from the federal government. Where do you think they got that money? They got it from you? They got it from me? They got it from everybody here? It didn't come from a money fairy. It came out of our pockets, and I object to it going to give away to people who got a vaccination. Private businesses are already giving away free products, donuts, meals, coffees, lower interest rates, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. There are awards galore. It is not the place of the government to rein money upon those people who participated in a medical procedure. We certainly don't give away money for flu vaccines, shingles vaccines, chickenpox vaccines, or testing for sexually transmitted diseases. Our national debt is out of control. Actually, that's an understatement. And who is it that owns most of our national debt? China. Just on principle, free, free federal money gifted to us to incentivize a medical procedure should be turned down just because we can't afford it. The taxpayers of this country are hemorrhaging money, and we are shackling our children and grandchildren to an obscene amount of debt. And I object to the use of taxpayer funds in this matter. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you.
I'm Stephanie S. Hannan, 73, 18 Wild Oaks Road, Fairhope. I'm a retired medical microbiologist and teacher. Resolution 26 is wrong and verging on coercion. Those employees who have decided to decline the experimental COVID-19 injections have done so on their own free choice and will and for their own reasons. For you councilmen to offer monetary reward to take the injections is tantamount to bribery. Those who refuse the money will certainly be unhappy with their monetary loss and most likely feel marginalized within the city workplace. Your resolution will cause this. The emergency use COVID-19 injections come with known and unknown risks. The PREP Act enacted in March 2020 gave total immunity from prosecution for healthcare professionals, distributors, and manufacturers of COVID-19 emergency use injections and tests. Should our city employees be injured due to taking your offer and submitting to the experimental injections, what will your response be? The Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, VAERS, is a CDC-based data collection system. The VAERS database shows the number of various injuries, deaths, and deaths that are passively reported, not mandated, by healthcare workers and families for the injured. From the beginning of the payouts in 1980 to July 2021, over $4 billion, with a B, taxpayer dollars have been paid out to injured vaccine, injured individuals. Both a study of the VAERS system paid for by CDC and done by researchers at Harvard from 2007 to 2010, and a Boston, Mass. General Brigham Hospital system found that only 1% of all vaccine injuries are ever reported to VAERS. The Boston, Mass. study is published in JAMA, Journal of American Medical Association, March 8, 2021. I collected the following cumulative data up to date last night, as of August 6th. Their up-to-date VAERS data at 4:00 today, this afternoon, from the CDC VAERS website. I specifically put in US and US territories. COVID-19 vaccine deaths reported on the VAERS as of 4:00 today, 6,337 deaths. COVID-19 life-threatening and permanent disabilities reported, 12,448. COVID-19 hospitalizations reported, 25,916. Using the Harvard and the JAMA-published finding of 1% being reported, I extrapolated these numbers for you. Cumulative US deaths from COVID-19 emergency use injections, 627,363. Cumulative US life-threatening injuries, permanent disabilities, 1,232,352. Cumulative hospitalizations from COVID-19 injuries, injections, 2,565,684. These emergency use COVID-19 injections do carry risks. Don't be put, don't put our employees under added pressure. Rescind this coercive resolution. Thank you.
The floor is still open for anyone else? Agenda items one through 27. I'll close public participation for agenda items. Remind you that you will have another opportunity to address the council at the conclusion of tonight's meeting. Council comments. Councilman Martin.
Well, I think I'll wait till we get to item number 26.
Okay. Councilman Conyers.
You have no comments.
Okay. Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, I'll just briefly say, we got the first day of school coming up for our local schools, and I just want to wish everybody a lot of luck, a prayer for a great school year, and good luck this week.
Okay. Councilman Boone?
No comment.
Officer Hammer, how did the, how did the event go at the Methodist Church, the school supply event?
We had a good show out, we had a good turnout, good participation. We have some backpacks left over. If you know a family member or somebody that is in need or could use some help with some school supplies, we would love for them to come by the station and pick up a backpack that's loaded up with stuff. We did donate quite a few after the event to the Newton School as well. But yeah, it was, it was a nice turnout.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But we do have supplies.
And I appreciate you bringing up school because, you know, y'all slow down, be patient. We got seven schools in our jurisdiction. Two of them are currently under construction. We got road construction for the high school, and we got some parking lot construction at the Newton School. It's going to impact the way you drop off and pick up your kids. And just like it always is, the first two weeks are going to be touch and go, so just be patient, please.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close council comments. We'll move to item five on tonight's agenda, which is the final adoption of an ordinance, amending zoning ordinance number 1253, Article 5, Section B.3, Central Business District overlay. Number three, uses, A, short-term rentals shall be allowed within the CBD regardless of the underlying zoning district. This was introduced at the last council meeting on July 26, 2021. Mike, I know you covered it in a work session, so, and you covered it, or Hunter covered it in the previous council meeting, so.
Yes, sir. So we went over that. This is just amending the CBD to allow the short-term rental use in there. If there are any outstanding questions that may have come up between the work session and now, I'd be happy to answer them. This has come up, we've had some little backstory, some recent zoning changes requesting to rezone for the sole purpose of being able to do short-term rentals. That in by itself goes to a zoning that allows other items besides just what short-term rentals would be. So instead of trying to rezone from a B.4, which is a fairly common zoning district inside the CBD, to go to a B.2, which has a lot more different uses than what our B.4 does, being a professional district, it better fit to, it made more sense to allow short-term rentals inside of the CBD as a revenue generator. And the May 13, or May 3 Planning Commission point out unanimously voted to approve 21.09, which was the case number affiliated with this.
Okay. Council, any questions for staff? Any comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clark, will you call the question, please?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, council. All right, item number six is an ordinance. This is consideration to final adoption to amend zoning ordinance number 1253, Article 5, Section B, Central Business District. This would be F, a minimum of 50% of the gross floor area on the ground floor of a building in the CBD shall be dedicated to commercial uses. This was also introduced at the last council meeting on July 26th. Mike?
Yes, sir. This was heard at the Planning Commission meeting on August 9th, where they voted unanimously to recommend approval to the council. And this is the minimum requirement of 50% on the gross floor area for the ground floor for mixed-use building in the CBD or for any building that's in the CBD. We touched on it during the work session of if it's a residential lot and they're building it as a residential home. The zoning ordinance by itself doesn't allow a commercial use on a residential zoning. They would have to rezone that property. The CBD doesn't give an additional allowances for uses on property. This, we've had some mixed-use buildings that have come before you, trying to put in a minimal commercial percentage on the bottom with a high percentage of residential units. As a staff and as a city, we see that it's more beneficial in our central business district to have, to be able to continue that storefront commercial building, look on the front and have that revenue coming in.
And Mike, looking at this closer, you can almost ignore my questions. And the second whereas does clearly state relate to commercial square footage required on the ground floor for mixed-use buildings?
Yes, sir. Not a problem.
Perfect. All right. It's amazing you put that in there and got that loaded to our laptop so quick.
You speak and I listen.
I don't know, I just, my eyes just went down the page. Okay. Council, do you have any questions for staff? Any comments? I think it's a good change. All right, I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
So moved.
Second.
I have two motions in two seconds. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. Clark, will you call the question, please?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number seven is to consider final adoption of an ordinance, amending zoning ordinance number 1253, a request to rezone the property of the Fairhope Single Tax Corporation and MPM Investments LLC from residential agricultural district to a B.4 business and professional district. The property is generally located at the west side of State Highway 181, approximately 200 feet north of Windmill Road in Fairhope, Alabama. This was also introduced at the July 26 city council meeting. Mike?
Mr. Council President, the Planning Commission also voted unanimously for approval subject to staff recommendations, which we'll get to in the next couple of slides. Hunter Simmons went over this at the July 26 meeting as you went into great detail, so I'll go through these quickly, and we can go back to any slide that you wish and ask any questions. This is going from RA to B.4 on the screen. You can see highlighted in blue, the green L-shaped lot is the RA's district, and they're requesting to go to B.4, which is what is located currently at the northeast and northwest corner of the intersection of Windmill and 181. The plat on the screen is one of the conditions of approval is there's two road frontages as it fronts on Windmill and 181. And to clear up what the front lot line may be, what setbacks may be, staff recommended that a replat be done to reflect the setbacks as they currently are requested. And again, the L-shaped lot, it has residential to the north, it's B.4 to the south, and a PUD across the street and adjacent to it. These were the setbacks that I was referring to, having a 60-foot minimum setback along Highway 181, 20-foot setback along Windmill, 20-foot setback along the northern and western property lines, and then a 10-foot minimum setback along the interior property lines as shown on the drawing. Again, with it being an L-shaped lot, trying to interpret what would be the setbacks on an irregular-shaped lot can be confusing and cause problems in the future. This is to clear up any problems or setback questions that we may have. The replat is a recorded document with probate that can be pulled up at any time by the current owner, future owner, or any staff member when looking at any type of building permit. Staff recommendation is approval for going from RA to B.4, subject to the following condition, and there's the submission of an administrative replat to record the setbacks as proposed by staff. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on the zoning change case.
Questions for staff, council? I would ask if you do make a motion for final approval, to be sure to include "subject to" the condition proposed by staff. If you, if you so are inclined, you don't have to, but I'm sure that staff is recommending that you include that language in your motion.
That would certainly help us out in the future.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion for final adoption.
Make a motion we approve, subject to staff recommendations.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Just say, "subject to staff recommendation," not only of approval, but of the condition. That, for clarification, is that what you?
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay. All right, any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. Clark, will you call the question, please?
Council President.
Aye.
Place two.
Aye.
Place three.
Aye.
Place four.
Aye.
Place five.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number eight is an ordinance to approve an application for Monica Gray, owner of Southern Charm Picnic Company, for a franchise agreement to operate pop-up picnics at Magnolia Beach Park, the park with the dolphin structure on South Mobile Street. Would somebody like to introduce the ordinance, please?
I'll introduce it.
Okay, ordinance has been introduced. We heard from Ms. Gray in the work session. Does anybody have any question for Lisa regarding this? What is the, what is the rent? Can somebody tell me what the rent is for that park?
It's not rentable.
It's not rentable, okay. So that income from a franchise agreement would be over and above anything that's gained there. What I was worrying is if you have a small picnic and you use it for a couple of hours and you have a couple of those versus renting it for a minimum amount of time, it might be better to say, "We don't allow it, and we rent it."
May I have a run those numbers?
Yeah. Well, we can't rent it, so this is over and above that now, by definition, I think.
But yeah, it's not a park that's supposed to have a rental agreement currently.
Okay. So it still wouldn't be allowed to be rented, but we'd have franchise agreement?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, if not, we're just going to let this lie over as we customarily do for final consideration at the next council meeting. If that's okay with everybody?
Yes.
Okay. We'll move on to item nine. Item nine is an ordinance to establish a non-emergency disconnect fee for the electric department and to add Chapter 21, Article 2, Electric in the Fairhope Code of Ordinances. Jeremy covered this in the work session. You turn back to tab nine, you see the fee proposed at $100. Does anybody have any questions for Jeremy pertaining to that?
Three, three more.
Okay, I don't think that we need to approve that tonight, so if it's okay with everybody, we'll let this lie over for final consideration.
Introduce it.
Yeah, introduce it.
I'll introduce it.
All right, good idea. All right, it's been introduced, and we'll let it lay over. Thank you, Jay. Item number 10 is an ordinance to add Fairhope Utilities' current specifications and shall apply to all sanitary sewer design within the City of Fairhope corporate limits and to subdivisions within the planning jurisdictions. I have to add Chapter 21, Article 4, Sewers, Fairhope Code of Ordinances. Somebody like to introduce the ordinance?
I'll introduce it.
Beat you to it, Jay.
Yeah.
All right. Jason covered this along with the mayor in the work session. Do y'all have any questions for staff or for the mayor right now? Okay, all right. No, we'll let this lie over for final consideration at the next council meeting. Item number 11 is a resolution that Corey Martin, City of Fairhope, is hereby appointed to serve as the city council's representative to fill the board vacancy on the Community Action Agency of South Alabama. I'll entertain a motion to make the.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Congratulations, Councilman Martin. Thank you for, I know that Jay is a little jealous, so.
Abstain. Very much.
Very much so. All right.
I abstain from that, by the way, just to make that on record. I didn't say a word.
All right.
Yes, ma'am.
Item 12 is a resolution that the governing body of the City of Fairhope hereby repeals resolution number 4118-21, rescinds bid number 14-21 for the six overhead doors for the fire station number three and authorize the staff to rebid due to, at the time of ordering, the cost of the doors had been increased due to the price increase of steel and materials for the doors. And that was the, the low bidder came back and said they couldn't offer it for the price, so it must be rebid. So I'll entertain a motion to rescind the bid and put it back out for rebid.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item number 13, and I'm going to add a sentence at the end of this, okay? The city council authorizes and approves the hiring of a new police dispatch position to allow the current police dispatcher, who is retiring, Cheryl LeBeau, who has been employed with the city for 13 years, to train the new employee prior to her retirement at the end of September. And this will be beneficial to the city as well as the new hire. And if you go to the actual resolution, I'm going to add, once the dispatcher, once the dispatcher retires, their position will be defunded. And the reason being is so we don't have an additional funded position. So if you can make that note, Clark. Can I entertain a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
All right, motion carries. Item 14 is a resolution, city council hereby approves and adopts the 2021 Baldwin County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan in fulfillment of the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000 and the local mitigation plan requirements of the 44 CFR Section 201.6 and FEMA Local Hazard Mitigation Planning Guidance. Any questions for Eric? He covered this in the work session. Let's just say that this will, planning grant will go to SARPSE now. One change. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to pass this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Any questions for Eric? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay.
All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 15 is a resolution, the city council hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute the client services agreement between the City of Fairhope Simple Health Solutions LLC in order to provide a near-site medical clinic and health management program for its employees and those enrolled in the city's health plan, including covered spouses, dependents, and retirees. And if you weren't here for the work session, we covered this in great detail. And while it's just one item on tonight's resolution, I think that it's a really big item and can't be understated how important this, if not, we hope is to, to our employees and the benefits they can receive from this. So, any questions for staff? Okay, if not, I'll entertain a motion to authorize the mayor to execute the agreement.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all of us in favor of the motion, please say aye. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Thank you. Thank you, Kim, and Jimmy, the mayor, and all that worked on this. Okay, item 16 is a resolution, the mayor, Sherry Sullivan, is hereby authorized to execute change order number two to bid number 25-19, replacement of the electronic doors for the Justice Center, for a deduction of $20,000 from the building contingency allowances, as well as an additional 10% overhead and profit in the amount of $2,000 for a total deduction, or deductive change order of $22,000, and award the change order to Cornerstone Detention Products Incorporated. It's not often that we see $22,000 reductions, but I sure would like to entertain a motion to allow this one.
I had to read it twice.
All right, I've heard a motion in a second already. Any further discussion?
Slip away.
Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 17 is a resolution, the city council approves the selection of Sawgrass Consulting LLC for preliminary survey and engineering services for three natural resources, national resources and conservation service grants for emergency watershed protection projects, and hereby authorizes Mayor Sherry Sullivan to execute a contract for project number two, that's Fairwood Boulevard, and project number three, the North Summit or the Big Mouth Gully Project, RFQ PS 009-21, with a total unbudgeted cost of $21,250 for professional services. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? He covered this in the work session. Okay, hearing no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the selection.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 18 is a resolution to award the bid for the Fairhope docks bulkhead repairs. This is FEMA item 4563, the rebid for the Public Works Department to Asphalt Service Incorporated with a total bid proposal of $329,867.77. Richard, this will be FEMA reimbursed at?
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven and a half percent. All right, we're getting eighty-seven and a half cents on the dollar. I'm not so sure federal government should be spending money like this, but it's a good point you make. All right, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, thank you, counsel. Motion carries. All right, item number 19, I'm gonna reword this a little bit, based on the discussion in the work session. Item number 19 is a resolution to award the bid for maintenance dredging at the Fairhope docks for the Public Works Department, bid number 35-21 to Greenco Services LLC with a total bid proposal not to exceed $150,000. It should be slightly different than what's stated on the resolution and in the package. Any questions for staff?
Make a motion, will you approve? It's present.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to award the bid. Any further discussion? For those of you that might think we're racing through this, we are, because all of this was discussed in great detail in tonight's work session. So, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 20 is a resolution to award the bid for headset packages for the Fairhope Volunteer Fire Department, bid number 33-21 to Sunbelt Fire Incorporated with a total bid proposal of $59,504. And if you recall from the work session, there was only one responsible bid, and I believe Chief Ellis made a case for why he needed these, and Kim said that we do have impact fees to cover the cost of this. So, any questions for Kim? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to award the bid.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion in a second to award the bid for the headset packages. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item 21 is a resolution, City of Fairhope vote to approve a three-year lease of the mailing machine for the City of Fairhope. The type of mailing machine needed is on the Alabama State Department of Purchasing Bid List and therefore does not have to be let out for bid, with a total lease amount of $18,846.36. And once again, that is for a three-year lease, not a one-year lease. Jeff told me during the break that that's about a, was it about a $1,000 increase over the prior three-year lease?
Yeah, the increase from 2018 is $1,750 for the, for the three years.
Also had a pretty good discussion with the clerk about how this is used, and by using this machine, we also save on postage and certified mail costs, and so we do recoup a lot of the cost of that through savings. Any questions for staff? Thank you, Jeff. Thank you, Lisa. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the lease.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 22 is a resolution, City of Fairhope vote to purchase three 15.5 kilovolt triple, triple-single, that sounds like something from the Olympics this last week, triple-single reclosure with added optional items for the electric department from Southern States LLC as sole source distributor and authorize procurement without formal bid based on the option allowed by the Code of Alabama. The cost will be $61,225. And Jimmy, correct me if I'm wrong, isn't that coming, isn't that coming a little bit under budget?
I think so, yeah.
Almost $14,000 under budget. Okay. Any questions for staff? Jeremy's here, if you have any questions. Okay, if not, I'll then entertain a bid to...
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for the purchase. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you. Item 23 is a resolution, City of Fairhope vote to procure five charging stations for the electric department. The equipment is available for direct procurement through the Sourcewell contract, which has been nationally bid, and therefore does not have to be let out for bid. The cost will be $55,090 and is reimbursable by the Alabama Municipal Electric Authority. So as a board member of AMEA representing Fairhope, I'm pretty proud of this. I think I actually made the motion to the board to allocate the money to each of the 11-member cities to put in these charging stations to promote the, the ability for people to charge their electric vehicles while they're conducting city business, or shopping, or eating, or whatever it is that they may be doing. But we're not giving away free fuel to people. People do have to use a credit card swipe to, to pay for the use of that. So I think it's pushing us forward. I read somewhere where, you know, Jay, you could probably tell me what the number is, but what percentage of vehicles will be electric by 2030? It's something like 30%, maybe? Come on, you're a lawyer, you know that.
Is that your law field? Electric vehicles.
I think it's something like that. But anyway, I think that, you know, I think it's, it's, it's gonna work well with the solar canopies that we have, that are gonna be on this corner out in this, in this very parking lot outside of this building. So I think it'll be a nice addition, nice amenity for the city to have. So with that, any questions for Jeremy or for the mayor?
I have a question. I don't, again, I have a problem with it. I'm just wondering, since it takes 12 hours to charge mine up at home, does my vehicle have to be parked in the parking spot for 12 hours?
It's not for golf carts. Do you have an electric vehicle? Yeah, but it won't, I don't know that it's gonna charge something. I don't think it's gonna be a...
You know Kevin's got a Tesla.
Won't be 120 volt, Willie.
It's an electric vehicle.
It will be 120 volt?
Yeah, there are different voltages.
You got to pay.
That's all about it.
Double for you.
There's several different types of chargers. We're gonna, we're not going with a fast charge, which takes 30 minutes to charge because of different connections and whatnot. So the charge point, I'm not sure, is that probably four hours, but you want to be there longer, don't you, spend that money?
Yeah. Right. I read four hours.
Yeah, absolutely.
Four?
Four.
I was kinda interested in that.
And it's usually averages like...
I learned something, too. I didn't know you...
A little bit over 300 miles with one charge, complete charge, from what I understand.
Take your word for it.
The Tesla.
I gotta gas, man.
It's like 350 miles.
Oh, yeah, they're getting up there. Depending on how fast you drive.
Right, but that's, that's about the average.
Right.
That'd be about 150 for Jack.
Not 50 for me, about, about...
No, 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 75 miles.
700 miles for Kevin.
He'll be there in four minutes, but he better be.
Do we have a motion in a second yet, clerk?
So moved.
Can I entertain a second? All right, thank you. We have a motion in a second to procure the charging stations. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, please say nay. All right, motion carries.
I wanna know why y'all are spending so much time Googling Teslas. I've spent my time looking for U4s and other things.
Because I'm blind, Jay, and I need a car that can drive me.
Fair enough.
Touche.
Fair enough.
This coming from a man that just bought the golf cart the size of a trailways bus.
I got a lot of kids at home. I gotta have something to carry.
He's buying his own vehicle.
It's a school bus.
All right. Sometimes we try to have a little fun. Item 24 is a resolution to award repairs to the elevator at the Fairhope Museum of History to Otis Elevator Company with a total cost of $17,705.98. And so currently, the elevator is shut down. This is an unbudgeted item, but I know that we saved a little money on item 22. I know that's the electric department, but some other things, it looks like we're saving a little money on item 19, so maybe we can afford to fix that elevator. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, counsel. Item number 25 is a resolution, the city council hereby approves and adopts a proposed one-time premium pay adjustment to current full-time, part-time, and seasonal employees who worked on-site between March 1st, 2020, and March 31st, 2021, for work performed at any time since the start of the COVID-19 public health emergency and for which they have not yet received additional and are adequate compensation for their service during the pandemic and are deemed essential workers pursuant to the American Rescue Plan Act as follows: full-time employees, $500; part-time employees, $250; and seasonal employees, $125. So I know you may wanna speak to this and the next, but I'll take a motion in a second, then we'll get to discussion. So I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. I know that there may not be as much discussion on item 25, but I, I would say, for one, to, to many of the citizens, and we've heard from many citizens, that when I, when I heard that Washington, I'll say Washington, Congress and Senate passed the American Rescue Plan Act, that I don't think they should be spending money this way. I, I think it's really, I, I think we're already in debt way beyond what we can maybe ever recover from. However, they allocated a certain amount of money for the City of Fairhope, and if we don't spend it, it's just gonna go to another community. So whether I like what they allocated to us or not for this, I think that we should spend it, and one of the main reasons I think that we should spend it, well, one is, somebody's gonna spend it if we don't, and we have to compete with the county and other municipalities for our employees, and many of them are, are giving out these bonuses, and we don't wanna send a signal to our employees that they're not important to us, because they are important to us. So for, for that reason, you know, I support this resolution, and I think that we wanna send a message to our employees that they are, they are important to us. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I'll just add to that, that in agreement with you, I think it's been a very challenging, challenging year. You know, we right about the halfway point that this covers. We got hit with a hurricane on top of that, so I think our employees have, have stepped up to the plate and performed very admirably in, in a very difficult situation, and I just think that this is something that's included in that, in that funding from federal government, and I feel like it's an opportunity for us to do something as a thank you to the employees ranging everywhere from full-time, part-time, seasonal. I just think it's a nice way to say thank you.
Yeah, I, I think this is, if we have the money that the federal government is allocating for people to come to work in a hazardous situation, because if you listened earlier to what the, the mayor said, we have 30-plus employees that are out with COVID. We have one guy that's in the hospital that's on oxygen, and when he takes the oxygen off, he goes down to the SATs about 80%. Normal oxygen level's about 94 to 100. I think that's a hazardous situation. So if a guy is willing to come and risk his family and everything else, and we have money to pay that guy for a hazardous situation, I'm all for it. He's coming to work. It's a reward, not a bribe.
Any other comments?
Uh, yeah, I would, I think it's great. I think anytime you can reward employees for, for their service, especially in times like this, I think it's a great idea. I personally would, would rather see these numbers doubled and take the money from '26 and reward every employee a little bit more, but, but I'm glad we're able to do what we're able to do.
Any comments, Councilman Ben?
I think we have the finest employees around. Anytime we can take a chance to get, take care of them, I'm all for it.
All right. We have a motion in a second. Any final discussion? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. All right, motion carries. Item number 26 is the resolution, the city council hereby approves and adopts the COVID-19 vaccine incentive program for the City of Fairhope for all city employees as follows: all employees who are vaccinated or not before September 10th, 2021, for COVID-19, will be compensated as follows: full-time employees, $500; part-time employees, $250; seasonal employees, $125. And I know that many people wanna speak on this, the mayor included. Can I get a motion in a second?
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. I have one question, real quick. Why September 10th? Why is that the deadline? Is that deadline according to the American Rescue Act?
It is not the deadline according to the, the plan. We, we set that deadline so we get, we get it in before the end of fiscal year, and also because we feel like the Pfizer vaccine will be FDA-approved by that time. We, we know that some people are skeptical of the vaccine, that they feel it's experimental because it has not been approved, so we were trying to give enough time for there to be approval, so that employees hopefully will feel more comfortable getting vaccinated.
And the reason I asked that was because if, if a full approval is anticipated, but let's just say it didn't come by September the 10th, I would hate to deny someone that bonus pay because they got it September 30th or something.
Right, and I think, I think we discussed that today. We certainly could make it contingent on when the vaccine is approved by FDA. I have no problem with that whatsoever. All the research that we have done, it looks like it's going to be, you know, approved in the next couple of weeks, but we know how government works. Obviously, we deal with it every day. So again, if you want to make it contingent on the approval, and so people are still able to get that once it is approved, I'm happy to do that. Anytime we can reward our employees again, or able to give them, you know, some sort of incentive, I'm happy to do that.
Well, I would think they could have the choice to do it with or without approval, but I would just maybe move back that date. I don't know that I like that date being so soon, just because of something where it happened.
Give them an opportunity to think about it.
I want people to have a chance to think about it and not be penalized for that, because they waited for a full approval. Kim, you want to weigh in?
Well, we could do two different check runs. We, I just looked at it, that that was, the 17th is not a regular pay date, so to be able to have a separate check run, I mean, we could be able to do that check run and then be able to select another day to do a check run. But it's just administrative-wise of when to do it.
Oh, I see. So we would have to rewrite this?
But we're going to get the money from the American Rescue Plan irregardless of that September 10th.
Right, we already have that money, so, yeah, it doesn't matter.
So whether it goes in the next fiscal year or not, I don't think matters.
It does not matter.
No, that doesn't matter. We were trying to look at, you know, a date that we could do a separate run, that's not on our regular pay run, to be able to, you know, for an employee to have a separate check. So, and that gives a month out from today for employees to start that vaccination process, but we can always do that check run, and then if we want to do another month, another run, you know, we could do it, stage it that way. But that's council's decision.
Right, so how this is written, is that a problem, Jack?
I think it is. I think we have, I think it is, and I think that that date should be November 30th.
Right, and you can do, I mean, you can pick whatever date you want to put in there.
Right.
I mean, it doesn't have to, but you can, but you can do it on the 10th, and then you could say another, you know, you could pick November 30th. So people who want to go ahead and do it can, and then if they want to wait for the approval, they can do it at a different date.
That's my comment. You know, I would suggest, and I know that there's going to be other comments made, but I would suggest changing that date to say November the 30th.
Do you want to give two options?
And then two, two check run dates, so if you want to go ahead and do it now?
Go ahead and keep to September 10th, but add a second date?
I don't think, I don't think the resolution affects check run dates.
Yeah, that, it's just the way it's written.
So you give us the authority of setting those check run dates?
Correct.
Yeah, I'd say whenever the next payday is after they get vaccinated.
She doesn't want to do this every?
Well, we're trying, we're trying to, you know, administrative-wise, to be able to like, okay, here's this list, because it's going to be manually entered in.
Well, you can determine when you cut the checks. We just want to say vaccinated by the date. We'll let you worry about that administratively.
Okay, that's, that's what we just want to make sure.
Yes, you're, we just don't want to exclude anybody, you know. I may have to take a month or two months to think about it before I do.
There may be multiple vaccines for full approval by then.
Right.
And I'm good with that.
Yes, that's all we're saying.
I mean, and if you want to be able to put in there that we can do one check run a month, you know, as we get through.
We'll leave that up to you and the mayor. Mayor, you want to make some further comments on this now?
I did. I just, you know, I don't disagree with any of the comments that were made earlier from the audience. I, you know, I hate that the federal government is doling out money this way, and that we are, I know that our country's in debt, and that we're going to continue to stay in debt if they keep giving out money like this. But again, we are a city who provides essential services: utility service, garbage service, police service, and we've been doing that during the pandemic. We've had more than 30 employees who have been out in the past month with positive tests or exposure, and when you take three to five people out of any department with the, with the growth Fairhope is experiencing in an already busy department, and you take those employees out for 14 days, it's impossible to continue to provide the level of service that is expected by our citizens. Y'all have seen restaurants close, you've seen stores closing. Walmart and Foley just closed this past weekend because of exposures to COVID, but these departments right now are barely treading water, and we cannot continue to have employees out. We've had several employees who've been hospitalized with complications, and according to the current data that I have, vaccinated employees are not as sick, they're not out as long, and typically are not hospitalized. Last week, Thomas Hospital had, had a fairly large number of people inpatient with COVID, and 92% of those inpatients with COVID had not been vaccinated. 92%. So we can use this American Rescue Plan money to reward employees who worked during the pandemic and to incentivize vaccines, and that's what we're trying to do. All full-time employees will get $500 regardless of their vaccination, so they're going to get that, and then if they are vaccinated by the date set by the council, then they will receive an additional $500. That's for full-time employees. I do hope that the Pfizer vaccine will be, will be approved in the next couple of weeks, because I know there are a lot of people, I have family members included, who are not comfortable getting this, getting this vaccination. I understand that, but we cannot continue to operate our city and not have our employees be safe and healthy. And I know that there are people who are skeptical of the vaccine, but again, I would say, please consult your personal physician, please discuss it with your family. The council is giving some additional time for people to consider that, and I would just ask that they would consider it.
Councilman Martin?
Well, I'm not going to, you know, vaccines have been around for a long time. You know, we came out, if you go do the documentary on the polio vaccine, the first guy that made it up there killed a bunch of people, you know. Rushed to get it, killed a bunch of people. The next guys came out of Pittsburgh, got it right, competed with each other, two doctors, got it right, took the doses themselves first. We go to school, or you don't go to school unless you have a blue card, right? What's on your blue card? Vaccinations. This has been going on for about 70 to 100 years now. So all of a sudden now, we're trying to, you know, make a vaccine or medical condition political, and it's hard for me to do that. I've had eight people in my family die from COVID. My mom and dad, my mom is immune deficient, she has the vaccine. I wouldn't tell my mom to get something unless I knew what it was. Some people have reactions to a lot of things, that's a part of it. These studies that were read, I can go pull up 10 studies, no offense, 10 studies that could argue against your study, and we don't know if that was a survey, observational study, a retrospective study. We don't know how many patients they had in the study, which is huge. Those numbers could be skewed. We don't know those things. So just to throw studies out, I think, ah, I can argue that on both sides. So, well, what I'm saying is, you know, this gives people the opportunity, in my opinion, to do the right thing, not for just themselves, but for other people around them. The virus is real, and it's only changing as we continue to hesitate as far as variants are concerned. I think we have Lambda coming out next, and each time it, 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 it has a variable, it gets worse. So this is a reward system, and we're the first one to do it. I'm, I'm, I say I'm proud of that, you know? Set the bar, I ain't scared to say it, you know, because I think this is something, in my opinion, that should be done in the community, not just for ourselves, for the other people around us that are at risk. That's all I got.
Well said. I would just add that definitely not in favor of a mandatory vaccine, but I do think sometimes you got to put a carrot out there to encourage people to take steps that are really for their benefit and for the community's benefit. I think a lot of the frustration with this is, has got to do less with the vaccine and more to do with the, the root and the source of COVID, and unfortunately, that's something that's out of our control. It's here, it's on us, and I think that a lot of that politis, politicalization of the vaccine has got to do more with the frustration of this unknown virus that is, is on us. And I think the vaccine is just something that everyone I know in the healthcare industry is begging people to get. It seems to be saving lives, and just would encourage people to go out and do it. Not mandatory, but would certainly encourage you to go get it.
It's a choice.
Anybody over here? Kevin?
My biggest deal is I'm a firm believer in the vaccine. I think this country waited on one, couldn't wait to get it here, we got it here, think you need to be vaccinated. I think it's really helped out and done the cause. Tremend, you know, tremendous help for the cause to blurrage this awful disease, and so, yeah, I'm all for it.
I see this as a, as a personal choice. I don't see it as bribery. I don't, nobody's being forced to take the vaccine. You don't have to take it if you don't want to. I personally have had the vaccine. Fortunately, I had no adverse reaction to it. Nobody in my family, all four members of my immediate family have had it, and we had no adverse reaction. That doesn't mean that somebody may not, may not have the adverse reaction. However, I feel like it's an incentive to get a shot. It's not a push. Nobody's going to chastise you if you don't. It's freedom of choice. The department heads that I have spoken to in the city about this, I was concerned about there being a rift between employees that take the vaccine and those that do not, and the department heads that I have talked to said that they've heard no such talk among their departments and their employees, because I really, I had a concern over someone getting an additional $500 or $250 or $125 versus someone that did not, but I think that the employees are respectful of each other enough that realize that they made a personal choice, and nobody made them do that. So for that reason, I, I think offering, Councilman Martin, it may have been you that I spoke to that said, this is a, this is a bonus, it's a double bonus, it's two bonuses, there's no, you know, there's no negative to this, there's no, I don't think that there's a downside to this, as long as employees don't have animosity towards one another. Anybody else? Any other comments, Mayor?
I did want to mention, I know that it was brought up about how much this is going to cost the city. It will cost probably less than $300,000 to, for the whole program and to give these incentives to the employees. The other thing I just want to let you know is that-
It will cost the federal government less than $300,000?
The federal government, but I do want to tell you that, you know, COVID is real dollars for us because we are self-insured, our medical insurance, we are self-insured.
I'm glad you made that point.
So we, I mean, a 15-day hospital stay, I mean, the city's going to end up paying for that. All the testing we're doing, all the, you know, the employees, when they have to go to the doctor and stuff, their family members, I mean, it really, it does impact our bottom line, and it does cost us money. And any, I just want people to know too, that the health and safety of our employees is always in the forefront of, you know, all of our minds. I mean, that's why we work hard every day to make sure they stay safe, whether it's with workman's comp or, or through programs like this. So, I mean, these decisions are not made lightly.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Hearing no further discussion, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, please say nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have one nay. Motion carries four to one. Thank you, council. Next item on tonight's agenda is an appointment to the Parking Authority. The nomination is Mandy Bezaretti. Many of you may know her. She works at Coastal Alabama Community College. I think she'd be a fine addition to that. Does anybody have any questions? If not, I'll entertain a nomination.
So moved.
Second.
Or, okay, not a nomination, but an appointment, motion for appointment. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, please say nay. All right, motion carries. Thank you, council. Item 28, public participation. If you have anything else to bring forth before the council, you can come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and we'll give you three minutes.
I'll try to do it in three minutes. Good evening. My name is Lynn Mazer, and I live in Rock Creek. I'm here this evening to request your support. A year ago, Rock Creek Golf Club was sold. The new owner has aggressively cleaned up and improved the course. Their business model concentrates on their resources, on maintenance efforts of the playing area, where their greatest revenue was generated while ignoring the clubhouse facility to any great extent. They have executed this plan so well, the golf course, the golf business at Rock Creek has skyrocketed this past year. Also, a year ago, the Rock Creek Board conducted a SWOT survey. Multiple responses indicated a strong desire to have a modernized clubhouse where social events for residents could be held, and in fact, increased. We shared the sentiment with the new owner. In response to our survey, an ad hoc committee from the board worked for over six months with the owner to develop a framework document calling for financial support from our residents to renovate the clubhouse, thus meeting perceived needs and wants as expressed by the residents. Our residents would have a voice in the final decision by voting in favor of or against this program. The framework document was presented to the board and was overwhelmingly rejected because it required mandatory social membership in the club. The golf club owner then circumvented the board and went directly to our residents in a town hall meeting and offered a compulsory, new word, rewards program, and if not approved by the residents, he said he would be required to go to Plan B. He will not share what Plan B is with us, claiming NDAs. However, in an email to the Board of Directors, he wrote, and I quote, "Since October, I have had five unsolicited inquiries about Rock Creek. One was an outright offer from an operator, and two were confidential inquiries from non-golf entities. On numerous occasions, this owner has brought up the specter of selling Rock Creek Golf Course to a developer as a viable option, and it deeply concerns our residents. It impacts their decision, clouding the facts of this important issue. This vote should not be taking place under the threat of a housing development as an alternative in the foreseeable future. As president of the Rock Creek POA Board, I am responsible for making sure our residents have all the information they need before casting their vote, and I'm here tonight because one of the equations in this issue lies with you. Because an ordinance was created for Rock Creek PUD, rezoning must occur as well as amendments to that ordinance before a developer could build houses, condos, or apartments on the golf course property. Because this is the purview of the Planning Department and the City Council, I am here this evening asking you to reject any applications and inquiries to turn the Rock Creek Golf Course into a housing development, at least through this council's term in office, and to confirm it verbally for the record. I would like to be able to tell our residents the threat of selling to a developer is not an imminent issue, thus removing this negative pressure and giving them the opportunity to make a decision with one more piece of the fact puzzle in place. Four years will give us the time we need to work out the solution to protecting Rock Creek property values and to determine what amenities our community actually wants and can financially support into the future. Thank you for your help in this situation."
I'll go first, Ms. Mazer. Well, first of all, if they wanted to sell it to a developer, I think that they probably could sell it to a developer. They could sell whatever they own, their interest to a developer. However, the current owners or any future owner to turn, if they're suggesting they would turn the golf course itself into a housing, then that would require a zoning amendment. Your state law, it would be, it would require a change to the PUD, which is its own zone, zoning ordinance, and that would have to be, to come before this body for approval. Now, that neighborhood is very site plan specific, and if you look at the site plan, it, it, you know, it not only calls itself a golf course community, it shows an 18-hole golf course very discreetly on, on the site plan, and it shows some amenities, packages, clubhouse, some other things. And so I know that it's been through many iterations through the years, at least the PUD has, but none of them specific to the golf course itself or the use of land as a golf course. So I'm only speaking for myself, and I'll say it on the record, because if they're, you know, making a threat to you, I don't care for it, is that I would never vote for a change to that PUD to change that golf course, the usage of that land, which is a golf course, to anything but a golf course. So I'll say that, and I'll say it on record. But like I said, they could sell it. I can't say they can't sell it. Now, I don't know that they, they can, they can do whatever they want as far as, they can try to mandate a membership. I think it would behoove them to try to come up with amenities that would lure people to join their club rather than use the stick.
You're right.
They ought to think about a nice amenities package to do that, but that's only my personal opinion.
Now, the longer the negotiations go on, the worse they become, so. So the threat of Plan B coming to be, it's greater.
So, council, you're not under any obligation to give your opinion. She's asked for that. I've given mine, but, so, you want to give an opinion, you can.
So, let me understand, I don't, so you're saying that you're in Rock Creek, and the new owners are threatening you to add an additional fee to become members of what they called their package deal, or as far as the golf course is concerned?
Basically, they're looking to Rock Creek to fund the renovation of the clubhouse building for which there would be a rewards program. I can't get into the negotiations because they're still ongoing, but they're looking to us to fund the renovation of the clubhouse building, and if they don't get funds from us to renovate it, then the threat is there that they, they have the opportunity to sell the bill, sell the property.
So they're trying to bully you. I don't like bullies.
Yes, we feel very much that way.
Yeah, yeah.
Lynn, I'm having a little bit of deja vu from our first encounter almost five years ago, I guess, or over five years ago now with the Fly Creek Apartments.
Right.
And I'm going to kind of tell you now what I, what I think I told you then, and that is, I would absolutely hate to see this happen. But without seeing what all of our regulations say, without seeing what all the requirements are and the rules are on what we can restrict and what we can't, I can't promise you I wouldn't, I can promise you I'll never want it to happen, but I can't promise you that it could never happen without seeing what all the legal ramifications would be. But everything that I could legally do to make sure it doesn't happen, I'm happy to give you that.
Thank you. That's, that's all we're asking for, is what legal action you can do and feel comfortable with, just to give our residents, you know, the knowledge that, you know, that they have an alternative besides housing development.
I'm on your side, on the record.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wouldn't support changing it from a golf course to a subdivision. However, if, if the residents of Rock Creek want a nice facility, they ought to consider joining, because I, I know-
It's being considered, but we prefer to consider it with all the facts on the table and not just-
Yeah, I don't, I don't think, I mean, I know I wouldn't support converting that from a golf course into a subdivision, but you'd also hate to see the amenities deteriorate if they're in support in the community for it, so.
Right, and that's the conundrum we have, but we like to make that decision freely.
And I'm sure when you're negotiating, you're saying, if we do this, we want X, Y, and Z in amenities, right?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Well, I'm not an attorney, so I don't know what the laws are going to tell you, but I can tell you that if it comes before this body, the answer, the same answer I gave you whenever you and I discussed this before, is the answer is no. I'd never approve something of that nature.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I will let our residents know. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Mazer.
Good to see you.
Is anyone else? Okay, I will close public participation and entertain a motion for adjournment. So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We're adjourned. Thank you, council.